Good morning and thank you for joining us for the July 28th Anoka County Board Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Next, we'll move on to item four. Is there a motion to approve tax claims and abatements?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to item five. We'll consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending July 17th of 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we'll look for approval of the minutes from July 14th, 2020 County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Are there any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Our minutes are adopted. Next, for Chair's remarks, we will consider for informational purposes, a presentation of Anoka County Awards of Excellence. It has come that time of year again to recognize and celebrate county employees who have gone above and beyond in their job duties to support their coworkers and to ensure the public is being served in the most thorough manner possible. I'm always proud to hear about the superb work of our employees during annual awards of excellence, and this year's no different. This is really an exciting meeting for most of us, to be able to interact with some of our higher achieving employees, knowing full well that all of our employees are working hard and achieving their job duties daily, but these are the ones that have gone above and beyond. So we really look forward to that. I'm going to ask Commissioner Brassad to start out our presentation today. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first award is for modeling our mission. This award is given to an individual who is regarded as an example of what it means to be respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible. The winner in this category is Tammy Allen, Administrative Services Assistant with Public Health and Environmental Services. Tammy continually focuses on process improvement and best practices for the department, and recently led an effort to create employee profiles for each staff position within PHES. This improved efficiencies in the on-off and sideboarding process. Prior to the creation of this system, the process required multiple service requests and many additional steps that were cumbersome and required an average of six hours per new hire to complete the process. The process developed by Tammy's help has reduced that time to one and a half hours. That's significant. Congratulations, Tammy, on receiving our Modeling Our Mission Award.
Thank you.
The Performance Award is given to an individual who displays a notable effort, outstanding performance, and/or significant contribution to the accomplishment of key organizational skills and objectives. The winner of the Performance Award this year is Paul Talbot, an investigator with Anoka County Attorney's Office. The Anoka County Sheriff's Office Criminal Investigative Division reached out requesting assistance from Investigator Talbot regarding financial fraud report from the Anoka County Finance and Central Services Division. Investigator Talbot, with extensive experience and expertise in financial fraud investigations, immediately began to work investigating the fraud case involving significant loss to finance and central service. Investigator Talbot was able to intercept and disrupt the ongoing theft by fraud. He was able to recover $920,000 of $960,000 that was fraudently stolen from Anoka County by means of a spoof email. Congratulations, Investigator Talbot, and you are very deserving of this award. Thank you.
The Leadership Award is given to a supervisor or manager who exhibits exemplary vision, leadership, and a dedication to their work and employees. Our Leadership Award goes to Kelly Hill, Administrative Supervisor in the Justice Services Division. Kelly is always approachable, a good listener, honest, fair, respectful, makes decisions with the utmost of integrity, always responds as does so quickly. Her work is always accurate, and she holds herself accountable for her actions. She expects quality work from her subordinates, but she does not micromanage. She's a great teacher, trainer, and mentor. She is a very caring and understanding individual who demonstrates daily what a true servant is, and her love for life shines through. Congratulations, Kelly, on receiving the Leadership Award.
The next award, a very important award, is the Customer Service Award. The Customer Service Award is presented to an individual, employee, or team of employees working together who have demonstrated a courteous effort, evaluated elevated degree of efficiency, effective responsiveness, and a willingness to go the extra mile to respond to requests from internal or external customers. I'm proud to tell you today that the winner of this category is Andrea Struzik, a victim witness specialist in the County Attorney's Office. Recently, Andrea contacted numerous victims in a very difficult case. She had to keep all the contacts organized, and she was persistent in her follow-up with victims and witnesses. Some of the victims did not want to be contacted and did not treat Andrea well, but she remained positive and professional. The case was extremely emotional, and Andrea used her skills to calm people down and guide them through the process of testifying. The Attorney's Office was successful in the trial for this case, due in large part to Andrea's efforts before and during the trial. Congratulations, Andrea, on receiving the Customer Service Award, and well deserved.
Commissioner Meisner, you're next up.
The Teamwork Award recognizes employees for proven excellence and documented improvements accomplished by collaborative efforts. Our first Teamwork Award goes to Tom Rogers, Application Developer with our Information Technology Department, and Angie Chalmers, Office Manager at the Medical Examiner's Office. Unfortunately, Angie could not join us today, but I am pleased to welcome Tom. And Tom, I'm so sorry, my back is to you. But Tom and Angie together worked on working on an outside agency hospice process. So previously, it was a lot of paperwork being faxed, one extra step for loved ones when dealing with hospice. So now it is streamlined, it is secure. Thank you very much. And actually, I was chatting with Tom earlier this morning, and the users that are using this, there are 13,000 new users using this application, and I believe 22,000 active users in total. So thank you so much, and congratulations, Tom and Angie.
Okay, our second Teamwork Award goes to GIS developer Charlie Teff, Parks Maintenance Superintendent Anders Orndsen, and Parks Summer Intern Joseph Gerard. Anders and Charlie worked together to design and implement a park asset management collector app. The app was located on a mobile device and used to inventory Anoka County parks' features like archery bales, bike racks, fire pits, grills, and more. The data was then used to inventory park assets, track maintenance cycles, and map the distribution of features and amenities throughout the various county parks. Joe did the field collection using the Park Asset Management Collector app, and over the summer, this was done over the summer of 2019. Joe collected over 3,000 feature points and logged not only their geographic location, but took pictures, noting the overall condition, and tracked the numerous other attributes that were set up by Charlie as part of the app's data dictionary. In the end, an extremely useful dataset was built using in-house technology for a fraction of the cost that it would have cost to hire a consultant or build the app or conduct and conduct the inventory for us. So congratulations, Charlie, Anders, and Joseph, on receiving the Teamwork Award.
Well, congratulations to all of our award winners. You exemplify the many innovative, hardworking, and deeply committed people who work on behalf of the citizens and customers of Anoka County. Again, it's truly a magnificent day when we have an opportunity to not only interact but recognize our hardworking employees in the county. And speaking of hardworking employees, those responsible for putting on the awards ceremony, figuring out how to social distance, take photos with social distancing, making sure everybody's masked up appropriately to the governor's executive order, thank you. Thank you for making this happen. It would be easy to call it a COVID criticality and not do it, but in this case, I'm glad we did. I hope we continue to try and carry out our orders even in a tough time, that we can still do the stuff we've always done, even though COVID is among us and we need to be careful. Let's go ahead and live life as normal as we can. And this is one example of how we've done that. So thanks again to Administrator Silveraja, Mike Roth, Eric and Dave, everybody that was a part of making sure this happened. I truly appreciate it, and I know my fellow board members agree. So thank you. That does conclude Chair's remarks, and we will move into our committee reports. And we will start with the Management Committee Report first. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have an additional item that we covered this morning in our Management Committee meeting, and it is going from a point FTE social worker grade 12 to a one FTE. So it's just making it a full-time position. And the need for this is there is an increased incidence of elder abuse and problems that happen for folks where we have to intervene or help them out, and it's greatly needed. It's funded by a grant, an annual grant, that it's the amount of the grant is adjusted according to the demand, so it should be covered. So I'll move that.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Those of you following along, this is your additional two agenda item that we are now currently on, as the original management report was all informational. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes.
And the rest is informational, so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner West. We will now move on to the Transportation Committee Chair Report, and we're bringing three items before you today. First, we would consider recommending approval to enter into a joint powers agreement with the city of Blaine for the installation of a traffic control signal system at the intersection of Radisson Road and Xylite Street, and nearside signal heads and flashing yellow arrow improvements to the existing traffic control signal system at the intersection of Radisson and 101st Avenue in the city of Blaine. Is there a motion to approve?
I will move that, Mr. Chairman.
It's a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that item passes. The second item on the agenda is for the same project, same intersections, but this will be to consider authorizing the county engineer to advertise for bids for that project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gamash?
Just a quick question for Joe. This is, I'm glad to see this. I think this is kind of a dangerous intersection with large trucks coming in and out. Do we have an idea, obviously, when construction would start?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioner. My name is Joe McPherson, I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. So this project, it's got a pretty compressed time schedule on this, so it's important we get this advertised as soon as possible. Our plan is to construct it and hopefully have the signal operational by this fall.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously. And the third and final thing on our transportation agenda for you today is to consider recommending award of a contract to Park Construction Company for the reconstruction of Osborne Road between Trunk Highway 47 and Trunk Highway 65 in the cities of Fridley and Spring Lake Park. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? I will comment that this is the long-awaited project that will turn this project into a better, safer roadway, and it had a little bit of question with the city councils as it moved through the two cities, but it seems like we've come to a pretty reasonable agreement. Everybody's happy for the most part, and we just received the DBE, the disadvantaged business enterprise approval from Bendot this morning, to move ahead and let this contract. I'm going to turn to Commissioner West and then Commissioner Meisner for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's interesting, because this is something, when I went to the first public meetings, I go, there's just no way this is going to be better. But they're going to show us their magic by removing a lane and creating more traffic flow. So I think it was very, very successful in that there's a lot of people that were objecting to it, and it's, just as you said, it's, people are looking forward to it now.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, just to echo what Commissioner West was talking about, I mean, change is hard, and especially for, it's kind of significant for this street. And I mentioned this before, but I just want to, again, thank you for the community outreach workshops that went into this, because we had those, and we really listened from, you know, council members to just residents, we were able to educate them, and I agree, for the most part, people understand it, they're happy about it, and this is great. I know that in my district, this is one of two county roads that will be experiencing this kind of upgrade. So thank you.
And I will comment to that, that this is something we do on almost every road project, is have public engagement meetings, public meetings, and we actually learn probably as much from our citizens during those meetings as they learn from us. So they are important. We've learned the value of them and continue to implement them whenever we can. So, and thank you to the Transportation Division for your diligence in that. Any further comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And that does conclude. Commissioner Look?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank Joe and Jerry. I had the pleasure last night of sitting in on a work session with them in Oak Grove. They were dealing with two intersections, a high accident type of intersections, and what sort of solutions might be appropriate there. The discussion of roundabouts, of course, came up, and you might refer to Oak Grove as more of a hostile environment to that, but they did a fantastic job of walking the council through. Joe asked for kind of a consensus type of what do you think type of question, and I think there was, it was pretty much unanimous that this is probably going to be a pretty good solution to some of the challenges. So my hat's off to you and Jerry for, you know, just, it's in how you handle it. It's in how you present the information. It's, it may be an uncomfortable topic, but if it's presented right and the facts are there to back you up, you have a better chance of getting that municipal consent that you need to proceed with these type of projects. And then, just a second thing I want to comment on is nice choice in ties, so.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Look. And I couldn't agree more. We have a great team out at Highway right now, and it's an appropriate day to pour a few accolades on them. It's Award Recipients Day, so we'll tell Joe, you didn't get that award, but keep working the way you do, Joe. We really appreciate it. That concludes my transportation report, and we will now move to the Human Services Report. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our Human Services Committee met on July 23rd, and we just have a few items this morning. The first is under the Consent Agenda, and it's a renewal contract with the Minnesota Department of Corrections for continuation of the Alternatives to Incarceration Grant. I'd be happy to move that.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just commentary that I'm so pleased to see this, and I want to say originally, weren't we one of the first in the state to receive this grant? And again, obviously, it reduces the incarceration terms and time, so that's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
That item passes. Item two.
Recommend the county board adjust the East Central Regional Juvenile Center Joint Powers Agreement to non-member per diem to $325. That is a 10% increase. It will be effective August 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. This is really for the cost of the beds for our non-member participants. It's a $29 increase per bed per day, and it really comes down to the cost of dealing with it because of COVID. This went through their board's approval and received unanimous approval. And I'll move that.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That item passes. Item three.
Consider the county board apply for and accept the Emergency Solutions Grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services in an amount of up to $800,000 for emergency shelter services and/or outreach to unsheltered individuals and families from October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2022. This is monies that we plan to use for the homeless population, assisting stepping stone emergency housing, and family promise of Anoka County. With COVID, we've had to pay for some hotel rooms for the homeless, help stepping stone and family promise able to social distance and spread things out. So this is really good money that will be well spent on our homeless population.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Meisner, second by Commissioner Reiner. Further discussion? Commissioner Gamash?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a board member of stepping stone, I will abstain from the vote on this vote, I think.
Duly noted. Any further comment? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Abstain.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes. Onto item four.
Offer, I would be happy to offer Resolution 2020 HS 13, which is the Economic Assistance Bills.
Offer the resolution of the Economic Assistance Bills. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes. Item B, 4B.
Would be Resolution 2020 HS 14, authorizing release of option to purchase refuse-derived fuel processing facility and equipment. This is basically giving up our options to purchase the Great River Energy Plant. We have to do this basically as a technicality because there is a buyer interested in that property. I'd be happy to offer that resolution.
Resolution's been offered. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously.
And that concludes my Human Services Report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. And while your mic is hot, let's jump to the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee Chair's Report.
Thank you. I would recommend the county board approve a contract amendment with Sarah Gordon, Inc., SGI, for mortuary transport services for a term from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, in the amount of $103,323 payable in 12 equal monthly installments. This is, has been a contract in place and is seen a 1% increase.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes. Item two.
I would recommend the county board approve the renewal of contract with Hennepin Healthcare to provide autopsy services. This is a one-year renewal with the option to renew for up to six additional years. The annual revenue is approximately $35,000. And I'll move that.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
And that item passes.
And that concludes my Chair's Report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Let's turn now to our Property Records and Taxation Committee's Chair Report. Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Property Records and Taxation Committee was not able to meet, so I bring before you a Chair Report for the full board. We have two action items. Number one is we recommend the county board adopt Resolution Number 2020-PRT6, authorizing conveyance of tax forfeit land to governmental subdivision for conditional use in the city of Fridley Park and Trail. PIN numbers 14-30-24-34-0010, 14-30-24-34-0007, 14-30-24-34, excuse me, -34-0008, all in the city of Fridley. And I will say that we've had some good discussions between us and the city of Fridley, and so I really appreciate that, and I believe that we have come up with a win-win situation, and I will move that.
There's an offer of the resolution. There's an offer of the resolution. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted.
And the second action item is we recommend the county board adopt Resolution 2020-PRT7, authorizing execution of State of Minnesota Voting Equipment Grant Agreement. And this has been in discussion for a little bit. We actually approved this in December of 2019. This is equipment that we've been looking at, actually, for several years. There is a county match to also have this grant of $187,161.78 in local funds. This is a one-time investment, and this is coming out of, I believe, our Asset Preservation Fund and not through our levy, so just wanted to educate around that. And then I'll just, I will move that and then also invite Paul Linnell to expand on that if you would like.
The resolution has been offered. Any further discussion? We'll turn to Paul.
Yeah, I think you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, I think you stated it very well. This is funds that would be used towards the purchase of assistive voting devices that are required under federal law. So, equipment was approved and certified by the state this fall, and the timing of this grant came through in December, so that's when we submitted our application. We expected to receive the grant award end of March. We've had some delays in getting the agreement from the secretary's office, so just recently received, and we're now accepting this award, and this will then allow us to engage with the vendor and move forward in discussions with the contract, which would ultimately come before the board.
Any questions for Paul? Seeing none, we have a resolution before us, and it is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted.
Perfect. That is all of the action items. The rest is informational, and I just thought I would share this. Last night, I was able to participate in an ABC League of Women Voters workshop, in which case the Secretary of State, Steve Simon, as well as Paul Linnell, was part of that conversation. And so just two key things that the Secretary of State was really advocating for and two basic asks with having elections during a pandemic. Number one is to consider voting from home this year. Public health is priority number one, and again, you can go to Minnesota Votes, that's MNvotes.org, to do that. And the number two ask was consider being an election judge. There are approximately 30,000 election judges throughout the state of Minnesota, and so the need is very great right now. And then obviously with a lot of questions of how this election, again, is going to look for a pandemic. So that is it for informational items, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Right now, Commissioner West.
I'd just like to piggyback on your election judge comments that teenagers are eligible to do very many of the responsibilities in an election judge.
Commissioner Meisner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner West, because that is true, and I certainly don't think about that. I think there's one restriction with that. I believe if you are under age, you do have to be an election judge within your district, and if you're over 18, then you do not. You're not tied down to your district, and you can go anywhere in the state, but thank you for bringing that up. Oh, and then actually one other additional thing. Election judges are a paid position. They're not a volunteer position. They can pay up to $20 per hour. I believe it's a two-hour training session, so the investment in time is pretty minimal. So again, if this speaks to you, please consider it. Thank you.
Paul, any clarification?
Just to add on student election judges, so those that are still in high school, 16 and 17, they can serve anywhere within the county as well as an adjacent county, so it is a broader pool they are able to work in. There's just some restrictions as it relates to handling ballots and certain duties that require party affiliation that a student election judge would not be able to perform, but by and large, they can do most of the same duties as any other election judge.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, so we'll jump in now to your additional agenda, and we will go to the first item there, which is Committee Reports for Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on July 23 and had a very quick meeting, but we came away with one action item. That action item is the committee recommends the county board approve contract C008002 with Comprize Technologies for a print management system at the libraries in an amount not to exceed $148,406. Our current software that we have at the library is what they refer to as not patron-friendly in terms of collecting cash and assisting patrons and that sort of thing. This will allow us more to do online type of work and set up print jobs and touchless and everything else that goes with that. We have about a three-and-a-half-year payback on this one in terms of the amount of revenue that we make on an annual basis with this print, print work. At any rate, that's before us.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that item passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Next on our additional agenda is the Information Technology Committee Report. Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Information Technology Committee met on July 28. We have one action item. The IT Committee considered and then recommended that the county board approve a purchase under contract number C0008052 with DocuSign, Inc. of San Francisco, California, in the amount of $423,526.20 with a change order of $42,352.62 to acquire an enterprise electronic signature platform. This is a platform that will help in a lot of areas around the county for getting signatures quickly from different aspects of different businesses, including even our Parks Department in some cases. But Susan Vreeland is here, our IT Committee, or our IT leader, and she could explain a little bit more as to some of the other benefits. This is an expensive purchase of $423,000, so it isn't, we don't take this lightly, but this will serve in many cases from the attorney's office to other departments across the county. So Susan, if you want to give us a quick update.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll interrupt just for a minute to tell us that this is not, this is an informational item. We did approve this at our last board meeting, so this is just for more information and the edification of the public as to where we're at and what we're doing. It was kind of an emergency purchase, so we did that at the last meeting. We'll turn to Susan now for more information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the county board. I'm Susan Vreeland, the county's IT Director, and I apologize, this mask is really itchy. For the benefit of the public and as we spoke at county board last week, we currently use at the county a combination of technologies and a lot of manual processes to sign a number of documents required for pretty much all of the services provided by the county. In the past, pre-COVID, the growth in requests for those services, the requirements for a number of documents require multiple signatures, and of course, the effort put into the manual processes has continued to increase. Even more prominent now with the impact of COVID-19 is the ability to provide a safe and efficient means to sign documents. That's really been significantly diminished. The need for this ability really touches all areas of the county and must be addressed, and this is to benefit and allow for our clients, our constituents, and of course, our staff to have the ability to safely conduct the transactions associated with service delivery. We've determined through a bit of research several months back, the use of DocuSign as the solution for the county to fill the need for all of those manual processes and signature that we're currently dealing with right now. In addition to being easy to use for staff with an email address and any device, and that could even be one of these, members of the public can sign many of the documents remotely related to a number of the services that we provide. So we really see this as a win for replacing what staff currently do right now, either manually or through kind of a clunky computer process, especially for the public with any device, including these, a tablet, a computer at home, to get the services they need without having to directly work with a member of county staff.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the clarification on that. So, we don't have a motion. It's just informational items.
It is.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Terrific. Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. Thank you, Susan. That concludes our committee reports, and we will move to item two on the additional agenda, which is item nine on your original agenda, which is a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for proposed self-insured healthcare insurance package. I will turn to Bill Keller to walk us through this a little bit before we take up the action.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Bill Keller. I'm the Central Services Director for Anoka County. I just want to point out that we did have a couple additions to this agenda item from the original agenda item that we put on. Things are always changing in this world, so I just want to bring these items to your attention. We did add three bullet points to our consideration. One is to move to self-insured from fully insured status. The other item is to approve the rates and contributions that are listed on the action item, the additional action item that we put into play, as well as approve the HRA contribution of $1,000 for single and $2,000 for family, which is no different than years past. I also want to make a correction from my presentation yesterday. At that presentation, I had mentioned that we would get $300,000 in wellness credits. That is actually $330,000 in wellness credits, so that went up. As of yesterday, we did get an update on our administrative fees. Yesterday, I presented $45.93 per employee per month. That has gone down by $2.48. We are now at $43.45 per employee per month. We did make a minor adjustment to the rates that were provided yesterday by one cent so that when employees have to make their contribution and we have to make our contribution bi-monthly, it came out as an even number so that we didn't have half cents in there. With that, I will offer it up for any questions.
Any questions for Bill? We did just get a long refresher on this yesterday morning at our county board work session. Most of us have asked all our questions yesterday, so there's not a lot to ask today. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, yes, no questions, just commentary. Just again, to thank you. I mean, this is such a complicated issue, and, you know, our biggest expense at the county is, our investment is in the employees and salaries and health benefits. So I just really appreciate the time that you have taken with us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Need a motion? Is there a motion to approve? I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. I have a motion by Commissioner Look and a second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? I will just quickly say that I am thrilled. I think it finally gives us a little bit more control over what we do moving forward. During the good years, we can certainly make sure that we reserve enough money to get through those valleys when the bad years come, and we don't need to sit up here and pontificate and make excuses why we have a 10% increase in healthcare. We will be in the driver's seat, and we'll be able to take responsibility for that if that should happen. So for that, I'm grateful. I'm grateful for Bill's work, direction of this board, to have them work towards a self-insured plan, I think helped a lot. Having clear direction from elected officials makes their job a little bit simpler than having to guess what we might want. So thank you to your team, Bill, and I know it's not just you. I know you have a whole team working on this, including Cory in finance and many, many others. So thank you. Commissioner Look.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to echo those comments. If there was another teamwork award, I think it should go out for something such as the work that was done on this. I know there are many people involved, the analysis, the comparisons, you know, making sure that there's not significant disruption at all, trying to, you know, weave this into, you know, a workable type of system for us here, moving from fully insured to self-insured, I think is not easy, not easy. And I certainly want to recognize everyone that's put a lot of time into this. We talked about this quite a few years ago, and it may not have made sense quite a few years ago, but as our organization has grown and as, you know, different numbers have come in and as we've seen, what was it, 30-some percent increase at first, and we've had to argue with them to get it down, approve our usage rates and all the game playing that's gone on with that, I think that, I think that this will be something that, again, Commissioner Schulte, as you said, we can control it. We can encourage people to be responsible. If it's, if our usage goes up, our rates go up, obviously, directly proportional. And so encouraging folks to be responsible and to use the gym downstairs and to use other gym options and to, you know, be healthier, I think will help us all as an organization, and this is an exciting time. So thank you for your hard work.
That was a good reminder, Commissioner Look, about the elevation of our wellness program. That was a big part of this negotiation this year, excuse me, was to elevate that wellness of our employees to make sure that they do embrace this wellness on their own to help our healthcare costs. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is pretty cool that it's coming to fruition today. I mean, it has been years that we've been talking about this, and you all have worked so hard on it. And I think one takeaway today is that we can look at our rates, that our employees will be paying for next year, and they either didn't change or they've seen even a decrease. So I think it's a really good thing, really good thing that we're doing for the county. Thank you for all your hard work and everyone's work that's went into this, because it's kind of a day to celebrate.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. And I will say, you know, being part of the team that helped assess and analyze, one of Bill's top concerns wasn't, are we going to save the county money? It's how can we keep our employees' costs down? How can we protect our employees, give them as good a coverage or better coverage at less cost? It wasn't always, how do we save the taxpayers overall? It was a really well-balanced approach, and again, many accolades. Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, I think, Bill, we're looking about $2 million higher if we went to fully insured versus this estimate, kind of rough numbers?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner Look, what it was, was if we did go to fully insured, we would have probably changed to a different carrier, and that would have looked like a 2% increase, which would have been about a half a million dollars increase, and we are at approximately $2 million decrease.
Well, Mr. Chair, that's a two-and-a-half million dollar swing, but essentially, it is saving the taxpayers' money and it is kind of, you know, taking the driver's seat away from, from maybe glass buildings out there making decisions on these type of things. So it's a, it's a, it's a great move, great move.
Indeed. Any further comments? We do have a motion and a second. This item's before us, and we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Yes.
Commissioner Meisner.
I mean, aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you again, Bill. Now, we are going to move into our Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act items. This is a lengthy list that we will be going through. We will move through it in relatively rapid fashion. If there are questions, we will address them. But the first two items here on your original agenda were item 10 and 11. They are our Business Relief Grant Program and our Nonprofit Relief Grant Program, which, again, we worked through yesterday in great detail. You have them before you. I am not going to read each and every one of them, and I will not make Chakel present. I will just say to all of you, you've heard the programs. We are extending $5 million worth of grant relief to our business community, and in this particular program, we will be extending $1 million worth of grant relief to our nonprofits, amongst many other relief programs for the nonprofits out of the Cares Money. This particular one is $1 million for nonprofit, $5 million for business community. The eligibility is clearly laid out in front of you. Again, we went through this yesterday, and I would encourage chambers of commerce, businesses, anybody tuning in or hearing about this, reach out to Chakel Hyder in our Economic Development Division and get the details. Get your application in. They'll all be online. You can apply online. There is no paper application, so it's a straightforward process, and you can get all the details when you call into the office or go online. With that, I will look for a motion to approve item three on your additional agenda, which is the Anoka County Business item three on your additional agenda, which is the Anoka County Business Relief Grant Program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Look, second by Commissioner Brasshead. Is there further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will pass unanimously. Next, we will move to item four on your additional agenda, which is the Anoka County Nonprofit Relief Grant Program. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner, second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to share what was discussed at the workshop yesterday. So for the nonprofit, as Commissioner Schulte alluded to, this is a, this program is $1 million. However, there is additional funds for nonprofit sector. There's a $3 million opportunity through our human services. This is primarily for our approximately 400 partners. And then there's also an additional almost $1 million in our CDBG COVID grant relief program as well. I'm a huge advocate for nonprofits. They are our partners and help to fill in the gaps for a lot of the work that we do. And so I just wanted to put that into context for anyone, again, wondering about the difference between, again, just this program with the $5 million for business and the $1 million for nonprofits. There is an additional $1 million for nonprofit sector through other avenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. And I would take a quick moment to call out Chakel and thank her for her tireless work in putting these together. This wasn't easy. Worked with the attorney's office, two of them here in the room with us who worked really hard on this as well. This was not easy to put together. It was challenging, and we worked, they've worked hard to make sure that we can get this CARES money out as quickly as possible to both the nonprofit sector and our business community. Chakel, you got a couple minutes for a few words?
Yes. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Again, I appreciate the effort. This was a partnership. We had many efforts from staff here, attorney's office. The idea behind this program is ultimately to help our businesses and nonprofits. But with that, we also have to be considerate that we are following all the guidelines set forth with the CARES Act. So everything that's being presented today in the policy presented is in consideration with what we have to abide by. We'll be working closely with two vendors to administer this, the funds as quick as we can. We'll also be coordinating with the chambers and the cities to spread news about this business relief program ahead of time, so people can prepare to apply online. And there'll also be technical assistance available through our Economic Development Department for those that need help applying, and through other organizations that work with our minority and women and veteran organizations. And then I'd also add, for those that are listening, and the Commissioners, again, there will be city CARES Act grant programs as well that are coming out, and if there's any confusion amongst the business community, have them call their city or their county partner in economic development. We'll help explain how to apply for both and how to navigate those resources. But ultimately, we are trying to help as many as we can, both businesses and nonprofits. And the actions set forth today in approving these policies will accomplish those goals. So I'm excited to see these funds get out and see all the teamwork that has been behind this, finally come to a day where we can start working with vendors and find a day to get these applications open. So thank you for the time, and thanks for everyone's efforts yesterday in the workshop and reviewing this.
Thank you, Chakel. Again, we, I want to call out both Chris and Nancy for their work from the attorney's office, because this is, it's easy, not easy, it's tough to put these together, but it's tougher to put them together and get them through an attorney's office. Sorry about that. But they did a great job of making sure that our goals were met, and that's always the bottom line, is you want to make sure that you're meeting the legal requirement. And then lastly, I'd like to call out both Cindy Caesar and Karen Skepper. They both work very closely with this as well and have done a fabulous job. And of course, it always goes back to the top, Administrator Severaja, making sure the ducks are all in a row and everything gets aligned. So thanks to our team, our staff, everybody did a fabulous job on these two programs specifically. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous vote. I will take two seconds now just to quickly call out our Business for Business program. I know there's a lot of this going on right now, so many different programs, it's hard to keep them all straight. But Business for Business is where larger corporations and businesses seed money to help smaller businesses that are really struggling. And our last board meeting, we called out Canexus for being great partners in our community. They just put in $25,000 into this Business for Business program. It's just huge. It's a way to get started. It's a way to help out smaller businesses. So again, Canexus stepping up, they are truly, truly one of the hearts of Anoka County when it comes to business stewardship. So again, thank you, Canexus, for your Business for Business contribution. With that, we are going to move into these CARES Act funding items under local government category, and Cory Kemp, our Director of Finances, will give us a brief overview, and then we'll get through these one at a time with roll call votes for each and every one. Cory?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, county board members. My name is Cory Kemp from the Finance and Central Services Division Manager for Anoka County. Last Thursday, as you know, in our board meeting, we, you guys adopted a number of resolutions allocating the CARES Act dollars. And working with Administrator Severaja and the CARES Act team, because we put together a CARES Act team to review requests by departments on their response to the public health pandemic. And so these are a number of items that are coming before you. They're not budgeted, therefore, we need to use our financial policies and request that you consider them. There are, I believe, 15 of them, and they cover everything from PPE to telework needs to needs for public health in order to stand up potential, from vaccination clinics in the future to testing clinics today, just resources to help transport citizens and clients with human services, to do the workout at highway as far as parks and libraries, and just kind of touching every aspect, facility modifications, so that we can have safe environment for our citizens to come in and do business with us where we're allowing that to occur. So there are a whole number of them. There is an item 18. I am just requesting that, due to the changes that came up late yesterday afternoon, that that would increase from 250 to about 360,000, and I believe, Mr. Chair, you're abreast of that. And so if that could get changed, that is the only other change I have. So with that, just asking for your consideration, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Cory. And I would just, for the viewers watching or the public that's watching, a 30,000-foot overview, this is our $43.4 million we received in CARES Act funding. This is how we will be distributing that money. We need to, we need to have board action to make sure that we're minding all of the proper criteria, whether that's a non-budgeted item from the previous budget, or whether it's something that was necessary for COVID. All those things have to be met, and this is how we can make sure that we document that properly, so that we are covered when the time comes. So we are going to start out with item five on your, Commissioner Gamache?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Cory a question, kind of give a, maybe a little bit. We're doing this as local government category. So in the CARES Act, there was local government dollars, and was it a percentage of the 43 that we're supposed to spend on a certain type of function that's like county-related compared to what we had done with our business and our nonprofit monies that we set aside?
Right, Mr. Chair, I'm Commissioner Gamache. We had three categories and three separate resolutions. Local government was one, Safety Net, which was the nonprofit program we just talked about. And then the business program was the economic recovery one. Now, within the local government, we did break down into some other broad categories such as telework, such as public health, such as reimbursing ourselves for salaries. And so these are all falling within those broad categories that were established under that resolution of local government. That's where these come in.
And Commissioner Gamache, to answer that a little more directly, the CARES Act does not direct a percentage. The percentage choice was our in-house committee or team of experts that are working on this. They chose the categories and the amount to apply to each category. It was not directed by the CARES Act in its final passage.
All right, thank you.
So we will jump into item five. Reminder that some of these haven't been done yet, and some have already been done. For instance, this very first one is the construction of the extra door here in administration and security locks and the key cards. That's been done, but qualifies completely for securing the seventh floor from COVID and separation, that type of thing. So you'll see, some of them are done, some of them are not. We'll start with consider approving reimbursement from the CARES Act funds in the amount of $65,221 for the construction and card readers related to the seventh floor administration security project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brasshead, second by Commissioner Look. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll consider approving procurement and purchase of cleaning equipment for various county departments in an amount not to exceed $40,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we'll consider approving procurement and purchase of a county mobile command post in an amount not to exceed $500,000 plus tax title and license fees, estimated to be $32,000, from LDV Custom Specialty Vehicles out of Burlington, Wisconsin. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? I will just point out that this is, it's listed under emergency management, but this is probably more so for public safety, public health. As we move forward with other pandemics in the future, it's a place for mobile vaccinations. It's a place for, you know, to set up a team somewhere out in the community when it's necessary. Also, it can be used for other public safety when needed, or for emergency management for large incidents outside of the, outside of our local buildings. Commissioner Meisner?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for clarification for myself, so this is going to be a fairly versatile transportation. It's not necessarily just 911 for call emergency centers.
Correct.
Okay.
This will be very versatile.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gamache?
Thank you. This is a rather large purchase, obviously, and a large vehicle. And I'm kind of wondering, further down the line in our budget process, as to costs of storage, cost of maintenance, cost of a lot of different things in this one. So just, we're just covering that portion of the purchase at this point in time with COVID and with COVID money from the CARES Act. So there won't be anything down the road covering that, so we're going to need to have this budgeted in. And I'm just wondering, first of all, where are we planning to store it? I'm assuming maybe our Department of Transportation area, but just kind of a couple of questions related to that type of thing.
I will turn to either Administrator Severaja or Terry Scholtzmann, our emergency manager, to perhaps answer the question. Globally, I will tell you that many of our CARES purchases appear to have tails, something that we'll have to account for in years to come. I am being as diligent as possible to make sure I account for all those tails. Most of them, when we're buying trucks, will rotate older trucks out sooner. We're not increasing fleets, except for this possible case here. Almost all our fleets will remain the same size two years from now as they are right now because of the tails. But I'll turn to Terry. Possible storage location and possible future funding for maintenance and upkeep.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamache, we already have a storage location over to the Fairgrounds Building. There is adequate space over there. That's one of the reasons, considerations with this opportunity, the size of the vehicle. Also, the timing of the vehicle is kind of a critical case. We have storage for the long-term implications, fuel, and then fleet implications for maintenance and so forth. That would be put into the fleet formula. Basically, they look at the first year's maintenance, and then they figure out the formula, so really, the impact would not be until 2022, and all the vehicles are pretty minimal. With being a new vehicle, we look at the lifespan, 10 to 20 years, depending how we take care of it. Most fire apparatus, large vehicles like this, are about a 20-year value. It is a large dollar amount. That's why you have not seen this in a CIP before. The need is there with all the things, but the primary purpose is looking at that public health piece. When you see on TV all those testing sites, and then all those things, you look at the type of vehicles that are out there, the type of equipment they're using, this meets that need. And for all of those uses, very flexible use instead of strictly just a public safety use. But that's one of the considerations. When COVID's not here, can we still use a vehicle like this? Certainly can. But storage taken care of, no additional cost there. We already have the building. We're not building anything. It's already there. And then fleet would be a consideration, and the costs, I would say, are super minimal, but they're normal vehicle costs.
Thank you, Terry, and Commissioner Gamache. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gamache?
Thank you. Being that this is a large purchase, I just want to kind of make sure I've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is. For usage, you mentioned, Terry mentioned testing facility or testing areas. Right now, as a county, we're not setting up any testing. Thank you. I thought someone would have an answer to this question.
Administrator Severaja?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county board. Actually, the Minnesota Department of Health has been, actually just sent a memo out yesterday to our Public Health Department, telling them to make sure that they set aside enough CARES dollars, because they are encouraging additional testing sites out within the communities. We are trying to identify what the responsibility is of the Minnesota Department of Health versus local public health. But we do know, we are already being asked to provide testing for our local law enforcement, fire protection, and so forth. So we are already doing that sort of testing, and we anticipate in the coming months that will only expand greatly.
Just follow-up.
Commissioner Gamache?
So this would be something that we could use in those cases, if it's sending a vehicle out to set up a facility to do some testing in all across, any area of the county?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, but it sounds like it's testing internally for the county, not necessarily externally for the public, correct?
Could be either.
It could be either.
What Administrator Severaja is saying is, Minnesota Department of Health is telling us that they would like us to be testing the public.
I see, okay.
Out in our, in our neighborhoods, in our county. The question just becomes, is that our responsibility? Is it their responsibility? And they're working through all that. They'll figure that out. But we know, as time moves on, this isn't probably our last pandemic. We know we may have another one. So we need to be prepared for how we can deal with that at that time. And I think that's truly what the CARES money is designed for, is to replace money that we've had to spend during this pandemic and to prepare us for the next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes. Next, we'll move to item eight. Consider approving procurement and purchase of two vans, one for social services and one for corrections, from Dodge of Burnsville for a total amount of $46,716 for both, plus any tax title and license fees, and up to $5,000 for the purchase and installation of a cage in the corrections van from Emergency Automotive Technologies Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brasshead, second by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll, Commissioner Gamache?
Quick, this makes a lot of sense in that we were actually using personal vehicles sometimes to move people back and forth. And obviously, with the way things are now, you have to have a larger space and more separation, so it makes some sense not to have to worry about cleaning out personal vehicles and these types of things and putting people at risk. So this is a good purchase.
Further comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we'll consider approving procurement and purchase of two reference desks, one for, one each for Rum River and Northtown Libraries in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Meisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brasshead.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that item passes. Consider approving Consider approving procurement and purchase of additional eBooks for the county library due to increase in demand during the COVID-19 pandemic, in an amount not to exceed $160,000. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Motion by Commissioner West, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner, is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we will consider approving the purchase and installation of six pay stations in an amount not to exceed $59,990 from VenTech International, and a $10,986 from Vinco Inc. for the Anoka County Parks System. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
So, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reinert. Further discussion? I would say this is more of a contactless payment option for people entering through our park system. It will, it will help long-term for a lot of reasons, but particularly during COVID, it's really important that we protect our employees and the public, and this is one more step in doing that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we'll consider approving procurement and purchase of personal protective equipment, otherwise known as PPE these days, in an amount not to exceed $450,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and so we have all the flexibility in terms of where to be putting the PPE. In, in terms of, it could be corrections, could be public health.
It could even be the public.
Could even be the public.
I believe. Once, once we procure that for COVID-19 expenses, it was unbudgeted, so it fits all the criteria. Once we have it in-house, we can determine if we need it all for employees, or if we need it for public safety, or if we actually need it for the public itself to deploy it in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes. Item 13, consider approving the procurement and installation of equipment in amounts not to exceed $20,419 from DataWorks Plus, $490 for cabling from Allstate Communication, and $1,800 for a laptop purchase from Dell for the purpose of establishing a booking station in the courthouse building. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brassad, a second by Commissioner Reinert. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes. Item 14, consider approving procurement and purchase of countywide telework equipment in an amount not to exceed $500,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
A motion by Commissioner Reinert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner, Commissioner Gamache, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to define telework equipment, I, I would assume that most of this would be under the IT department?
I would assume that's.
For connectivity?
Yes, I assume that's accurate. Administrator Silveraja, is there an addition to IT when it comes to telework equipment?
Mr. Chairman, members of the county board, as outlined, it would include telework equipment such as laptops, keyboards, mice, monitors, webcams, microphones, and headsets.
Certainly, all IT-related equipment, but yes.
But, um, like hard, hardware, thank you.
And necessary software to implement that hardware in remote locations would all be included in that category. Commissioner Gamache?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, so this is procurement, not reimbursement, so this is going forward, buying new things that we did, because we've already done some of this earlier.
I believe some of what we've already done would be lumped into this, but I'll turn to Corey for an exact answer there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gamache, yeah, basically, we've identified almost $385,000. We have spent some already upfront, which is part of this 500, and if there's additional, we'll come and let you know if there's additional, but we've, yeah, we've expended a lot when we first went out the door in March. We are continuing to look at doing some expenses right now, I know Susan is working through, looking at some, some needs in some of the departments, and so this is lumping it all together, bringing in laptops, allowing monitors at home to continue the remote work that is going, and providing the right tools for our employees.
Thank you.
I, I think it is a combination of paying us back, and, and we may not have expended the funds yet, we may have ordered those computers, we got them out, but we actually haven't paid for them yet, so it is truly a procurement, probably why the nomenclature is the way it is. I have Commissioner Meisner first, and then Commissioner Reinert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so for example, we, the $400,000 approximately for the DOCU, DOCU signage for IT, so that would be not necessarily all of this, but partly funded by this, or no?
The DOCU sign will be separate because it's a three-year contract, and we can only pay for the first year with CARES money. The second year's contracts have to be paid for out of our budget.
Okay.
So, DOCU sign is probably a little separate line item than this 500,000.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reinert?
Yeah, I was just going to state what I remember from previous meetings and conversations that, you know, when COVID hit and we sent, probably it was up to 1,000 employees home, is that correct? I think it was 300 laptops we had to purchase, and I think that's some of the 300 and some thousand dollars that was stated, that has already been spent, so that's what I was assuming this was covering, not only past expense but future needs, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinert. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we will move to item 15, consider approving the purchase of three half-ton pickup trucks for the Parks Department from Midway Ford, in an amount not to exceed $148,000, plus any tax and license fees. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Gamache, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reinert. Further discussion? I will say it again, that always concerned about the tails, future expenses brought on by current purchases, and so we had lengthy discussions, and this is another one of those where this is a temporary increase in the fleet, and it will be brought back to its normal size in reasonable time. Any further discussion? Commissioner Reinert?
I think in addition to that too, when the reduction happens, we'll be reducing it with the older equipment and keeping these newer pieces of equipment, so.
That's accurate. Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That item passes. We'll move to item 16, consider approving the purchase of a postage machine from Pitney Bose, in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gamache, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll consider approving the procurement and installation of multimedia room from Tierney Brothers out of St. Paul in the county attorney's office, in an amount not to exceed $120,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Motion by Commissioner Look, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, we'll move to item 18, where there is a modification, where it says $250,000, we will change that to $360,000, and I will read that motion to you now. Consider approving the procurement and installation of multimedia audio/video equipment for videoconferencing in the Anoka County Government Center, in an amount not to exceed $360,000 from Tierney Brothers out of St. Paul. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meisner, and a second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and these are the kind of portable pods that we have downstairs that we just piloted a while back. That's what this investment is for?
It is not. I will have Corey explain to us exactly what this is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Meisner, Commissioners. This is for modifications to our county boardroom and some of the rooms up on seventh floor to allow us to be more present with the public through, through our meetings, because we've not been able to bring the public in. So, this is kind of putting, you know, a better lens on that, and this is a modifications that are needed, that our communications department has vetted through, you know, to make these productions like we're doing today happen and continue to happen, so.
Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just further comments, so I'm, I'm pleased to see this, as you guys know, I think one of the silver linings of this pandemic is the accessibility, when we had our committee meetings here, people could see in real time from their homes and that kind of thing, so I think that is great, and I, I hope to see that continued even, even after COVID-19. Thank you.
And I will, before we, we have a motion on the floor now, but the, the motion does need to be modified a little bit, so I'm going to need the, the motioner and the second to agree. This is not, it says it's just for the Government Center, but it's not, this is also for Bunker Hills Activity Center, to improve audio/video qualities in that facility. So, the motion maker was, Commissioner Meisner, are you accepting that amendment as a friendly amendment?
Yes, you're, you're saying to include other locations?
Bunker Hills Activity Center.
Yes, thank you.
That's included, the seconders agreed?
Yeah.
All right. So, we have a motion, amended motion, second on the floor. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Reinert?
And I don't know if the motion also included the increase from 250 to 360?
That was actually, I, I stated that as the original motion.
Okay, all right.
I did modify that, and she moved it that way, but Commissioner Meisner?
Yeah, I'm so sorry, but since we're, we're adding all locations, so transportation as an example, if the goal would potentially be in the future to broadcast all committee meetings, may we also include the transportation area, since I know that's where the committee meetings are originally held?
Except, I think it has to be COVID-related. I'll turn to Administrator Silveraja.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the county board, I know that as we looked at room kits for other locations in a, in another discussion, we identified which locations throughout the county needed those, I believe that there was at least one within the transportation building. The, the $360,000 and the quote for that is very specific to these rooms, so I, we don't want to look at modifying this particular action.
Yeah, and so what we'll do is we'll, we'll take this motion as it's presented, and if we decide it, next week, that we need to do something at transportation, we'll come